...for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Bond.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Move on to public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Is there... is the member of the public that's here would like to speak?[38.32][38.32](Laughter) I don't want anybody else... I thought Walers was getting up to speak.[42.82][42.82](Laughter) All right? Not cutting anybody off, but since he said no, we'll go ahead and move on. I'll read the consent agenda, entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes, the village board meeting of June 11th, accounts payable for FY '18 for June 22nd, accounts payable for FY '19 through June 21st, I mean, A&amp;A Attractions Carnival permit, appointment of Brittany Johnson to HPC through May 31st, 2021, and then ordinance 1816 adopting a 2018 prevailing wage rate, and this is waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries four zero. Thank you. Items for separate action. The first item, we have land donation and contribution agreement for Hartz Park. That'll ask Director Young for a summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have before you a agreement that would be between the Village of Montgomery, the Oswego Land Park District, Hartz Construction Company, and Montgomery Property LLC, which is made up of S.R. Jacobson and Edward Rosensons, the developers of the future apartment development. What this does is, we've been having discussions for several months now between the four parties regarding the creation of a park that could be adjacent to the new apartment development and part of the marquee point subdivision that has not been developed as of yet. Technically, it would be in the fourth phase of what was intended to be four phases of single-family homes. Two hundred and six lots altogether. They've built about fifteen homes to date, single-family homes. One of the things that we've had discussions with the board about in the past was looking at some of their raw dirt to be converted into alternative types of product, meaning townhomes and duplexes. At your station tonight, and I apologize, in the packet itself, the printing of the packet did not correctly identify the entire park site that we're talking about here. So you have a colored version of that.
Do you hand it out?
I just handed this out tonight. It was in the packet, but it didn't print correctly. So this is the park itself. It's about seven acres. That would be land that was assigned originally for twenty-five single-family lots and converted to this proposed park. The second handout is a diagram, which is a concept plan that identifies their Phase Two, which again was intended to be single-family homes, but now would incorporate duplex units on the perimeter that's identified basically in that beige area, and then some townhomes, which you can see the buildings themselves on the concept plan. So this is, again, something we've talked about with the board in the past. All of this is background information to put together this agreement that if Hartz was to go forward with the donation of land instead of cash to the Park District in the tune of seven acres, it could incorporate the property that's identified on the park plan and also handle the excess dirt spoils that the apartment development is going to have. And rather than truck it off at a pretty expensive rate, it could be incorporated into this park, primarily where you see the berms. There are two berms on either side of what's labeled as a playground, which is identified as a blue circle on the Park District plan or on the park plan. So, long story short, you have before you tonight an agreement that we asked for your approval on, subject to attorney review. There's some language adjustments that are being made at this time at the request of Hartz. I'd also like to identify that it's been listed as Hartz Park. The Park District would like to have naming rights to the park, let's say. So that's just a working title for the document itself at this time. And the second item on your agenda would be the first reading of the actual donation ordinance itself. So we would come back to you in two weeks and ask you for approval of the donation ordinance. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Thank you. That's the first item. The second one is ordinance 1815. That's first reading of that ordinance, and we'll approve that at a later meeting. We'll move on. Item C, we have resolution... Oh, we have to vote on that, on the agreement today?
I'd like to have you vote on the agreement.
Okay, sorry.
Subject to attorney review.
I get you.
Subject to attorney review.
Thanks, I was like halfway down the page already.
And then, yeah, we would come back, like I said, in two weeks. The subject to attorney review would include acceptance of the concept plan only. We'll come back for, you know, final plat and approval of this document for, you know, plant commission review and approval, but your concurrence with the concept of the development itself.
Okay.
Motion to approve the land donation agreement for Hartz Park, subject to attorney review.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry about that. Carries four zero. And then, item B is the ordinance at a later date. Item C, we have resolution 2018-011, approval of a $10,000 forgivable loan with Maine and Webster Partners LLC. Director Van Vorm.
Thank you, President Rowley. In front of you tonight is the actual resolution approving the $10,000 forgivable loan. At the last meeting, the board accepted the Montgomery Development Fund recommendation to give that loan, and were asked to bring this back at a future date. If there's any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
My carries four zero. Thank you. Ordinance 1814 is amending the Village Code, Chapter Three, for alcoholic beverages, Sections Three... Section 3-12, this is the bond requirement. This is waiver first, passage on the second.
I can address this.
Go ahead.
We currently require you to have a bond with your liquor license, including if you have a temporary liquor license. The main point then is if there's some sort of violation of the liquor license and you don't pay the fine, the fee, we have that there. It's not been an issue with our temporary license holders, and, you know, a lot of them are non-for-profits, small organizations, it can put a little bit of a burden on them. And if we do have an issue with them, it's a temporary license, it expires. We don't have to issue them one, you know, the following year if there's been a problem. So we just felt, you know, as we looked at it, we'd had some questions on some of the recent applicants about it, so we thought we'd recommend removing that... removing that requirement, because we think we can cover it other ways if we have an issue with the license holder.
There are no concerns with this with the police department?
No, sir.
Okay.
Attorney? No concerns?
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Carries four zero. Thank you. All right, the next item is resolution 2018-012 endorsing the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact Two. That'll ask Director Zofel for an intro, or?
Certainly, I can do that. Previous board in 2007 adopted the initial Greenest Region Compact. There have been changes and updates to it, and so Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus is kind of looking for communities to adopt the updated version now. Edith Mackra from Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus is here to tell you a little bit about it. So if you want to come on down to the podium there.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Edith Mackra. I'm Director of Environmental Initiatives for the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and I just have to say, my impression of Montgomery is really good. I just drove in. It's been a while since I've been here, and I don't think I've been in season, so it's a really pretty town. Just want to say how nice and welcoming it is. So the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, we're a not-for-profit council of governments, and we are umbrella to all the other councils of governments, including Metro West. We work collaboratively through all of those COGS. The Mayor's Caucus, and as Jeff has said, we've had a long history of environmental initiatives for... since really the founding of the Mayor's Caucus. As sustainability has become more important over time, we found our need... or we found a need to serve communities strategically. None of the communities that we work for have an abundance of resources, nor do we. We're actually a very tiny organization. So we created the Greenest Region Compact to strategically address sustainability for communities and for the region. So if it's okay, I'll walk through the presentation. Thank you for preparing that, loading that. Where am I pointing?
Oh, yeah, it doesn't work?
No, I just don't know where to point.
Okay. Yeah, right there works.
Probably... probably just... just at the screen. Thank you. Great. So I'll be quick, but I just wanted to go over the purpose of the Greenest Region Compact, how it was built, because that's very important to what it is, and then tell you what the Greenest Region Compact is. It's a sustainability template in three parts. So there's an actual compact, which is what you're addressing tonight. There is the Greenest Region Compact Framework, which is a supportive tool, and then we have current and future programs that I'll talk about briefly. The purpose, as I said, we don't have an abundance of resources. When we put this together, we wanted to be very strategic. What can communities of all sizes with all different levels of capacity do to be strategic on sustainability? And we chose to really look at aligning with programs that are already in existence and with higher-level goals and community goals. It was an initiative really to bring together lots of layers, local to federal and even global, in terms of sustainability, to make sure that the efforts were in alignment. It is something that can be tailored to communities of any capacity. So putting together the Greenest Region Compact, we did this a couple of years ago, and we were very thoughtful about doing this. We wanted to see what was already underway on sustainability in the region, and we wanted to capture programs that are already underway and useful that could continue to be helpful. So to do that, we inventoried what we called environmental achievements for every municipality. We looked at our membership. Our membership is 275 municipalities, and we actually expanded to pick up some communities elsewhere in the state, outside of the metro area, just to inform our work. And what we did, this study, we counted every type of environmental achievement, and you can see this is a map of those achievements, and I'll explain a little more what all the colors and codes mean. But if for right now, you just let it wash over you that this is the metro region, certainly you're highlighted there with an arrow, but what we found is that every community is doing something on sustainability, that there really was only one community out of 290 that we studied that didn't have anything to be proud of, that didn't have anything going on, which was incredibly refreshing. There's a lot of data here, and what it also told us is where there are strengths for communities with existing programs and what the priorities were. So we studied those trends, and that all went into the Greenest Region Compact. The actual... I've learned to call it a rap sheet, but just in terms of recognizing that you're already doing sustainability, you probably are fully aware of it, but not every community is. We looked back, and this is a historical perspective, back from the date of the first Greenest Region Compact, which was 2009 was when it was... 2008 was when it was actually introduced. We tallied up to 2014 at least the sustainability initiatives that we could track by third party. So we really went to... I think I have a pointer. I'm gonna try it. No. Yeah. Let me pick one. Actually, Emerald Ashbora Grant is one that was a program that replaced trees. That was a U.S. Forest Service grant. The Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus actually did that. We went into the grant database to find that. We went to CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, had inventoried which communities had 100% water metering, which is a very practical, totally sustainable measure of sustainability or sensible management of water resources. So we tallied all of these different programs. Watersense Partner is a U.S. EPA program. It's an incentive program to advocate for water efficiency. And I see our friends from EEI here nodding. Pete, thank you for all your work probably advocating for this. So this was the foundation of the Greenest Region Compact, to be able to pull in what you're already doing, for one. And that was a snapshot in time. It was very informative and reflected well on communities to say, all right, you're already doing sustainability. I meshed those existing programs into the new Greenest Region Compact as we built it. Second step on building the Greenest Region Compact is to look at what is already planned. Again, Montgomery already had a sustainability plan. We read all the sustainability plans we could find. Very common way of practicing and thinking in the municipal world is to say, okay, what are our neighbors doing? And what we did for the purpose of the Greenest Region Compact is we looked at all the local sustainability plans in the region that we could find and compared the ones that were comparable... that had specific goals that were of the same format that could be compared. So we really did a lot of work for communities in total, and we looked at national and regional ones as well. In total, we looked at almost 1,150 specific sustainability goals. We spent a lot of time working that data. We had a consultant helping us do that, and while it was a lot of work to get there and there was a lot of data, it boils down to a fairly straightforward document. This is just a sort of an image of the side-by-side comparison of the sustainability plans. We did look at the one that was done for Montgomery and Oswego. This is an older plan that we looked at, but because it didn't have very specific goals that were similar to others, they didn't actually go into the database, but it informed our study here. And if you can just see the diversity in the sustainability plans from community to community, the higher bar means that those are more goals. It's not a better plan or a worse plan. It doesn't mean anything other than to say, as we looked at what everybody else is thinking about. And we think the result of putting together that, what is already being done and what is already planned, makes for an enormously practical template sustainability document or pledge. So what we did then, as I said, there was a lot of data. We synthesized it into a very streamlined set of goals. So you think of all the data as the foundation. What sort of floated to the top was these categories of sustainability goals. By the way, some of the colors now, just so you can see here, the green section are land-related goals. That was by far the most popular goal in all of the sustainability plans that we read. The sustainable communities category, which is in purple here, relates to... it's a catch-all for things like having LEED-certified buildings for pursuing sustainability initiatives, or having a green team, or having a sustainability plan. But this is also the sustainable communities where all the people focus goes. So everything related to engagement in civic affairs and leadership and equity and inclusion is where all that falls. That was the next highest category. There was lots of massaging of these, and what we then came up with was what we actually call the Greenest Region Compact. And there were ten categories of sustainability goals, and the actual document that you're asked to review and approve really falls into just the high-level overarching goals for all of these, all the data that we found. They're very aspirational. There's no measures or targets to them, but these are areas that, again, play to the strengths of municipalities, being enormously practical from the way it was created. At this point, the Greenest Region Compact has some momentum. We launched this in March of 2016. We've had communities of all sizes and strengths from Burlington, one of your tiny neighbors out here, to the city of Chicago, 99 communities who have adopted it. So that makes us nearly the largest sustainability collaborative in the country in just the two years that we've been doing it. It is the largest regional, and should you pass it tonight, you will be 100. So I'm excited for... and that's one of the reasons I'm out here, is that's a big milestone for us. All of the councils of governments have also endorsed this with a resolution. So that's the compact, and that's what the resolution that you'll be voting on will endorse. Because we did all that work on the data and because it was meant to be helpful, we created... we put all that stuff, all the details, into the Greenest Region Compact Framework, which is a longer document. I have brought some if anybody wants to work through it. And that provides specific strategies and objectives that help you address those goals. This is only offered as a tool, and because, again, the way it was built, it aligns with the existing sustainability plan that you have. It offers a really nice tool with specific strategies that can help you do a self-assessment. Most communities that have worked through this feel really good about. I think LaGrange just the other day told us they had 70 percent... they had some action on 70% of the strategies and objectives in the Greenest Region Compact. It's not a big community either. So we hope it's helpful. Some communities are actually working to a sustainability plan. If you just use it for ideas, that's fine, too. There's no obligation really to do any reporting or to create a sustainability plan for it or from it. The third part of the Greenest Region Compact then is supportive programs, and because we are such a small organization, we do the best we can, as Mayor Ostenberg, who's our Environment Committee Chairman, and the Mayor of Park Forest says, we link arms to get things done together. And so with the resources that we have, we invite Greenest Region Compact communities to work together on different initiatives, and we track achievements only related to those goals. I'm sorry, that's support... underway. So these pilot projects that we're doing together, this linking arms, we have invited the Greenest Region Compact communities to work with us on these initiatives, and I'll talk about the Soul Smart program in a second here. When we do have grant resources, which unfortunately isn't as often as we'd like, but right now we have a Powering Safe Communities Grant Program for public safety, we do give preference to Greenest Region Compact communities that have shown support for these goals in the grant-making that we have. What we plan, although it is just under development right now, is to return to some of the earlier recognition programs and tracking of specific goals that we had with our earlier environmental programs, including something called Clean Air Counts. But there's always this intention to guide resources to Greenest Region Compact communities. And the specific initiative that I'll talk about, and happily Montgomery, is in this next cohort of communities. So this is a page from our Greenest Region Compact Framework, and this is the energy section. If you look at the column that says goal there, those are high-level goals. And the only thing that you'd be signing on to tonight would be to the goal to advance renewable energy or enact policies that support... oops, clean energy. The actual strategies then, if you see the ones that are circled there, are more specific, and those are suggestions. They are good strategies for advancing renewable energy, and the idea of adopting renewable energy technologies by adapting building and zoning codes is something really within the wheelhouse of municipalities if we want to move forward on clean energy. So we collaborated with a national not-for-profit group that offers a program called Soul Smart, and Soul Smart is a pathway for municipalities to do exactly this, streamline codes and policies. We were very interested in this because state legislation called the Future Energy Jobs Act, or Fija, as it's sometimes affectionately known, will bring $750 million from utilities to solar development in Illinois. So it'd be really good for municipalities to get ready for that type of investment. And the Soul Smart program offers this pathway, basically training, checklists, strategies, what's the most effective way. And what we were able to do together, we applied... Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus applied for a small grant and worked on contract with this solar foundation to move communities through the Soul Smart program. And because of the Greenest Region Compact, because that was in place, and because we were able to say, all these municipalities are on board with these goals formally because they've adopted Greenest Region Compact, we had the most effective cohort in the country, and we now have more Soul Smart designated communities than either California or Colorado. We're holding on that. We're kind of proud of that. Although not being a solar state, we have to keep up with it. So we are calling for another cohort, and there's another grant offering through the solar foundation. And again, very proudly, Montgomery has chosen to be a part of that next one. So we should know, actually, at the end of the week, whether or not we have that grant. And what we will do is work collaboratively, linking arms to do trainings. You'll get free review of your zoning code to make sure that it is... with recommendations for making it more solar-friendly. We'll help with training inspectors, permitting processes that will make it quicker and easier to develop solar as suits your community. And there's... that's our graduating class of the Soul Smart Communities Aurora was the neighbor that was graduated, but we had tiny communities like Park Forest and South Barrington that also participated in this. We had three counties, Kane County, also Kane County, Cook County is... and Will County got designated. So we hope that works out well for Montgomery. So at this point, I'm done presenting, but I do hope that you adopt it. I'm very... I'm here with a certificate if you say yes, so. We'll get a photo up if you don't mind. I'm kind of excited.
Awesome. All right. Thank you. Any questions for Edith while she's at the podium? This is something that, over the last couple of years, things that I've been focused on is sustainability. When you dig into a lot of these plans, and specifically this in the framework, you realize that we... I was adding it up over the weekend. Over 130 of the individual items are things that we currently work on in Montgomery. We just don't call it that. And so, yeah, when Edith emailed last week and said we're at 99, I was looking to bring this to the board at some point anyway. And just one other tidbit that I would say, I brought this up at the Metro West meeting last month or the month before, with the thought or the hope that some of the communities in there would kind of join forces and maybe tackle a few of these specific items together. If there's things... one thing that I was looking up, I don't think there is a single electric charging station in all of Kendall County. And so when you think about that, who... you know, how hard is it going to be for people to invest in electric vehicles if they can't go and charge them anywhere? So reality is, we're doing a lot of stuff now. The legwork, I think, for our staff is as minimal as we want it to be, but reality is, this is something that we clearly believe in and want to get behind it.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion to?
I would love a motion.
Motion to approve resolution endorsing Metropolitan Mayor Caucus Greenest Region Compact.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Edith, you want to come up for?
There are a lot of things that Matt Rowley will do for a certificate.
Do you want somebody to take a picture with your... Edith, you want to take a picture with your phone?
Just let the record show that the one citizen that was here left right after that. Awesome. Thank you, Edith. Appreciate it. All right. So with that, we'll move on with the items for separate action. We have item F, recommendation to waive competitive bid and award a contract for street striping to Perform Traffic Control Systems Limited of Elk Grove Village in the amount not to exceed $27,000. That'll turn it over to our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. As in years past, we budgeted for street striping for a lot of our community. These streets really get beat up with snowplows, and we also do a lot of street patching, and a lot of those markings are no longer there. So Perform has been awarded a contract with Kane County Division of Transportation, and they are passing on their unit pricing to all local municipalities. So I'm asking for a waiver of competitive bid to not to exceed $27,000 for this year's annual striping program. And if approved, we will get you a list of roadways that will be intended to get striped at a later date. If you have any more questions, I'll answer them now. Yes, sir.
So this is... it's the Kane County bid, but we'll be striping Kane and Kendall County?
Well, we're just going to piggyback off of their award of contract. up with some sort of cross-section that's more visible to hopefully allow motorists to see what's coming up.
So you're looking for consistency?
Correct. Consistency is probably the best term.
At intersections, right? Not in the middle of the block or anything like that.
Right.
I mean, I've noticed that as well, being fairly new, driving around town. I mean, you know, a lot of communities do strip their stop bars and things like that or even crosswalks. We don't see a lot of that. I know that there was one section that we might do on Concord, going over the bike trail for a pedestrian walkway. But that's something that we can bring up in the future. You know, I mean, you know, we can present this later on or maybe even, you know, budget more money for next year to be able to do that, because that would be a big undertaking, or maybe even do a multi-phase project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And me, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. And President Rowley?
Yes. All right. Thank you. It carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Moving on to item H, we have revised task order with Lane Christensen for rehab of well three. Engineer Wallers, go ahead.
So as you're aware, we're under rehab for well three. So when we put forward the first task order, the first task order covers all of the maintenance items that we expect that will be needed. But when we bid, or when we get the task order from Lane before they start, we also get a number of other items that may or may not be needed. So we get pricing on pump replacement, we get pricing on a motor replacement. Until we get all the equipment out of the well, we don't know what the condition is, so we don't know what that is. So the first task order is to get the material out of the well, do the assessment, and then there's a number of things that we know we're going to have to replace. And that was $146,139. Now that we've got the equipment out and the pump and the motor have been inspected, it was determined that the pump assembly was too worn to repair, so it needs to be replaced. So we're recommending that we replace that with a new Byron Jackson pump, which we did have an original price for, and that's $35,328. Now, there's a few other incidental items that are also listed on this final part of the task order revision. And the total then brings it, including the 146, it's a total of $184,706. We had budgeted about $230,000 for the well maintenance, so we're still under budget. But this is something that we need to replace the pump assembly. So we're asking the board this evening for approval of that revision so that we can replace the pump and continue on with the well rehab.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Is this one that requires President Rowley? Okay. And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Items for discussion. We have the discussion of the water rate study results. The flyer in the packet is just one sheet. Something tells me it's not going to be, I'm actually really looking forward to this. So that'll turn it over to EEI for presentation.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Michelle Petrowski. I've been working with Peter Wallers on the water rate study, and I'm just going to brief you at some of the work we've been doing. Feel free to ask questions along the way, and hopefully it will be insightful. So just to give you a feel for what we're going to go through, we're going to do an introduction of what the rates are, go through some background information, review the cash reserve policy, talk about some projections, and then review some of the rate options we prepared, and then look at some rate comparisons, and then talk about next steps. And ultimately, we're going to touch on connection fees at the very, very end, but the focus is really on the rates. So first and foremost, the understanding of water and sewer rates is not to make money, not to make a profit, but rather let the expenses meet the revenues and make sure we're maintaining a safe reserve or an adequate reserve in the meantime. So on the revenue side, which throughout the presentation is generally blue, and the expense side is orange, on the revenue side, though, most of what make up the rates are your base service charge, you know, your monthly fee, and then you have your rate per thousand gallons. You also have connection fees as new things come along, but the bulk of your rates are made up, or the bulk of your revenue is made up from the rates and the base service charge. On the expense side, it's really operations and maintenance, debt service, your capital improvements, and then whatever reserve you want to maintain in the bank. So that being said, currently, the village has expenses that are estimated to be about $6.34 million, with operational costs about $3.5 million, and debt service of $1.2 million, and the capital improvements at $1.7 million, just rough numbers. From the revenue perspective, we kind of, there's a highlight, currently, there's two funds. The water fund is really what is your operational cost, and then the water improvement, where your service fees come in, your rates, all that comes into the water fund. On the flip side, you have the Water Improvement Fund, which is where all your connection fees and all the other monies, miscellaneous monies generally come in. So just more background on the system, there's pumped water and billed water. This is pumped water, with water coming from the wells. Average day demand's about 2.4 MGD, million gallons per day, and the maximum day demand's about 4.0 million gallons per day. This serves a population within the village limits of about 20,000 people, just under 20,000 people. There's also an unincorporated area with Blackberry Heights and Boulder Hill for another 8,400, so a total of 28,200 people approximately. So as we talk about projections in the future, one of the main items, how you project the revenues, is you take the number of people, how much water they're using, and then times the rate, and that's really how you generate your revenue. So in this case, and you've got to be cautious when you're starting to make projections, from a population perspective, you don't want to be too, you don't want to overestimate. Because if you overestimate, then you're overestimating your water use, and then you're overestimating your revenues, and your expenses are greater than your revenues. So in this case, we typically look at CMAP's population, and the CMAP population, and then we compared it to what community development is actually experiencing, and what we talked with our buddy Rich here, and he provided us some more reasonable numbers. And we wanted to be conservative because we're talking about the revenue coming in, so we went with the community development numbers. So by 2040 projection, we're looking at 24,000 people. And as we do this study, we generally look at like a five-year term because that's the immediate need, but then we go out 20 years to look at maintenance items and that sort of thing. So that's why we're projecting the population out, all the way out to 2040. So looking at historical build population, generally speaking, about 75% of your water use is residential, the other 25% is commercial and industrial. That being said, there's a little of both, both the unincorporated and incorporated, and about 23% say is commercial, and the remaining portion is residential. So then we start looking at what's your historical water use per capita to project that out. Once again, we've been seeing trends in northeastern Illinois, 2% or greater with water use decline. And at this point, we saw, if we look back since 2001 to 2017, we've been seeing general decline of 2.33%. It's just generally appliances are becoming more user, or more water efficient, et cetera. Plus, there've been users in the community, water use has changed throughout those years. But generally speaking, we've been seeing a 2.33% decline. So the other item that we like to track and kind of play into is water loss becomes a big issue, and the village has been very active over the last several years in attacking the water main breaks. And I think this slide right here shows how you see the steady decline in the number of water main breaks per year. This is, the red is the total of the water main breaks, the blue is the village, or the Boulder Hill water main breaks, and the purple is the village water main breaks. So you go, what's normal, what's usual, what, where should we be with those breaks? And there's a general parameter, it's not a standard per se, but a guideline, shall we call it, of 25 to 27 main breaks per 100 miles. So yes, we're making great strides, but you can see within the unincorporated areas, there's still room for improvement particularly in there. So then we start talking about the historical revenues. Once again, the water fund is basically your service fees, and then your Water Improvement Fund is more your connection fees and other funds, miscellaneous funds. Most of your, as you can tell by this slide, most of your revenues are made up by the water rates and your base service charges. On the flip side with the expense, and this is just for fiscal year, a snapshot for fiscal year 2017, you can see quite a large portion of what's being expended is the water plant operations, almost 70%, and then debt service is about 25%, and then the remaining is capital So this is generally looking historically, you have some up years, some down years. Sometimes the revenue's up, sometimes the revenue's below the expenses, but they, all in all, just about even out when you, when you spread them over the course of the five or six years. So now that we've talked about the revenues and expenses, what are we aiming for? What do we want in our bank account at the end of the day? And that's really based on a policy from set by the village board. And generally, we're looking at 25% of the water operating budget plus some seasonal cash flow. So those periods where the bonds or the loan payments are due and we have to make payroll, we don't want to dip too far below, and it's just, it's your comfort money. So all in all, that will change year to year because your operating expenses change year to year. So roughly in fiscal year 2019, we're looking at 2.4 million is what we would like to maintain in our bank account. So now we start talking about all of the projections, how we're projecting our revenues and our expenses. From a revenue perspective, we start looking at the water use. As we mentioned before, we were at about 2.33% decline over, historically. We believe that some level of decline will continue. Our best crystal ball says it will continue to decline. Eventually, you're not going to get to zero water use per capita. So we know that it'll level off, but we also know that we should look at these rates frequently, you know, every three to five years. So for the sake of this study, we assumed a continual 2% decline so we can be conservative with our revenues, and then we evened it out to 0% knowing that the village would likely come back and look at the rates again in the future to see how that trend's working. So looking at projections, you can see, all in all, over the last five years, there's been about $6.1 million that the village has been spending annually. And it proposed for the next five years annually, we're expecting about $6.3 million. So if you look, what's the difference? Or where are major improvements? Because the operational costs are pretty standard, the debt service, all that is pretty standard. So where's the real, you know, where are we spending our money with the CIP? And the major improvements included some facility maintenance for your wells, your storage tanks, your treatment facilities, et cetera, lift stations, there's lead service replacement included in the budget, and some water main replacement. Now let's take a minute and look at the water facility maintenance. This is a summary slide of how much we're spending just on the facility maintenance, the wells, water treatment plants, and tanks. And this is, this clearly demonstrates how, why you need to not just look at the five-year projection, but you need to look all the way out to the 20-year. So what you're seeing in the first five years are some fairly low amounts, some small amounts. We're in that time of the cycle of rehab that there's just not a lot happening. There's some, but not a lot. But you can see as you approach the 20-year mark, and even before then, you have water treatment plant rehabs. So what we're trying to avoid So you go, what's normal, what's usual, what, where should we be with those breaks? And there's a general parameter, it's not a standard per se, but a guideline, shall we call it, of 25 to 27 main breaks per 100 miles. So yes, we're making great strides, but you can see within the unincorporated areas, there's still room, room for improvement particularly in there. So then, we start talking about the historical revenues. Once again, the water fund is basically your service fees, and then your Water Improvement Fund is more your connection fees and other, other funds, miscellaneous funds. Most of your, as you can tell by this slide, most of your revenues are made up by the water rates and your base service charges. On the flip side, with the expense, and this is just for fiscal year, a snapshot for fiscal year 2017, you can see quite a large portion of what's being expended is the water plant operations, almost 70%. And then debt service is about 25%, and then the remaining is capital improvements. So this is generally looking historically, you have some up years, some down years. Sometimes the revenue's up, sometimes the revenue's below the expenses, but they, all in all, just about even out when you, when you spread them over the course of the, the five or six years. So now that we've talked about the revenues and expenses, what are we aiming for? What do we want in our bank account at that, at the end of the day? And that's, that's really based on a policy from set by the village board. And generally, we're looking at 25% of the water operating budget, plus some seasonal cash flow. So those periods where the, the bonds or the loan payments are due, and we have to make payroll, we don't want to dip too far below, and it's just, it's your comfort money. So all in all, that will change year to year, because your operating expenses change year to year. So roughly in fiscal year 2019, we're looking at 2.4 million is what we would like to maintain in our bank account. So now we start talking about all of the projections, how we're projecting our revenues and our expenses. From a revenue perspective, we start looking at the water use. As I, as we mentioned before, we were at about 2.33% decline over, historically. We believe that some level of decline will continue. Our best crystal ball says it will continue to decline. Eventually, you're not going to get to zero water use per capita. So we know that it'll level off, but we also know that we should look at these rates frequently, you know, every three to five years. So for the sake of this study, we assumed a continual 2% decline, so we can be conservative with our revenues. And then we evened it out to 0%, knowing that the village would likely come back and look at the rates again in the, in the future to see how that trend's working. So looking at projections, you can see, all in all, over the last five years, there's been about $6.1 million that, that the village has been spending annually. And it proposed for the next five years, annually, we're expecting about $6.3 million. So if you look, what's the difference? Or where are major improvements? Because the operational costs are pretty standard, the, the debt service, all that is pretty standard. So where's the real, you know, where are we spending our money with the CIP? And the major improvements included some facility maintenance for your wells, your, your storage tanks, yours, your treatment facilities, et cetera, lift stations. There's lead service replacement included in the budget, and some water main replacement. Now let's take a minute and look at that, the water facility maintenance. This is a summary slide of how much we're spending just on the facility maintenance, the wells, water treatment plants, and tanks. And this is, this clearly demonstrates how, why you need to not just look at the five-year projection, but you need to look all the way out to the 20-year. So what you're seeing in the first five years are some fairly low amounts, some small amounts. We're in that time of the cycle of rehab that there's just not a lot happening. There's some, but not a lot. But you can see as you approach the 20-year mark, and even before then, you have water treatment plant rehabs. So what we're trying to avoid by, by looking at those gaps is to, we don't want to say, yeah, 3% works and 2% works, whatever, and then all of a sudden, you have a 10 or 15% raise. We're trying to avoid that and keep a steady, a steady incline to, to meet the expenses. So now, where are we at with our rates? There's unincorporated, there's incorporated and unincorporated rates, and resident rates. So resident rates, we'll focus on the incorporated, are about $5.79 per thousand gallons. And then we have some base service charges. There's $6 for water and $4 for sewer, and that's every two months. So that's $3 every month, or $2 every, every month for sewer. There's also currently in place for the Boulder Hill residents, an infrastructure fee, $15 per month to cover some of the expenses we've had with the water main replacements. We understand that Fox Macho issues a separate bill, so our rate study doesn't account for any of that. It's not included in here, and just wanted to explicitly say that. So then we go, so what do these rates really mean to the average person or the average family? So we assumed about 10,800 gallons per customer is being used every two months. That equates to about $72.53 every, every two months. If you break that out into a monthly bill, that's about $36.27. I'll put the add-in, all of us look at our, our telephone bills, and we'll talk about this a little later. Telephone bills, our utility, our other utility bills, whether it's electric or cable, or they're all monthly. So I think it's important to understand the relevance there by looking at that $36, comparatively speaking.
I have a question. This is residential customers, or is this all customers?
This is average residential, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So now we know where we're at, we know what we're aiming for, so we started running through some options. We looked at the current rate ordinance, there's basically, what's built in is 3% increases currently. And then we did option two and option three. Their, their annual increases, 3.5%, 4.5%, we'll show you why we looked at those options, just to... And then we kind of looked at the alternate water supply option, knowing that that's a, a real possibility for the village in future years. So we programmed some of the expenses in, and we said, if we wanted to get there, so we don't have that big, major jump, where will we be, or where would we be, our best crystal ball? So that's what options 4A and 5A will, will discuss. So running through, option one, this is a simple chart of revenues versus expenses. So once again, blue is revenues, orange is expenses. And as you, you go out, you look at those first five years, and you can see the orange is much higher than your blue. So that's probably leading you to think you might have some sort of deficiency. But yet, you go in the future, and you start having larger revenues instead of expenses. And so it might balance out. And so what this diagram does, still talking about option number one, is it talks about that cash balance reserve. So that, if you recall in fiscal year 2019, we were supposed to be about that 2.4 million. So that is the black line, that's our target, the black line's our target. The green line is actually where we are, and the shaded green line is, or the shaded bar is what the bonds are. So when you have very large expenses, to make an even rate and to make the hit on the budget, smooth it out for everyone, bonding sometimes helps that out. And that's part of the reason why you would take a bond or a loan out, a low-interest loan through the IPA, or whatever it is. So there is some, there, there are some projects in here that we, the larger projects generally, you know, the major water tower projects and water treatment plant rehabs and that sort of thing, we included as bonded projects in here to kind of smooth the rate out. So we're very well aware, but the first, any bonding, the first would be in 2024. So I should go back. So looking at that, the general understanding is, is you have a negative amount, you're below your target amount in the next five years, but at the end of the 20 years, you have a surplus, a significant surplus. So then we looked at option two, we just said, instead of doing a 3%, can we, can we start meeting our, our goals by doing 3.5% to get where we need to be in those first five years? And you can see, we're getting closer. We still have some years where we have more, a little bit of a deficit, a little bit better. And as you can see, if you trend that out all the way, the 3.5%, your surplus becomes greater out in 2038. So then we look at option number three. And in option number three, we said, let's try to get something that smoothes things out a little bit, which means possibly a different rate, because we are getting a really, a larger surplus at the end of the period. And we're still having somewhat of a deficit on, in the initial five years. So this is, once again, simple revenues versus expenses. And what we look at here is, we're, we're still slightly shy, but honestly, when we're doing these rate projections, these are our best guesses. The actual numbers dictate, so we're, if we're within 100,000 or even 150,000, we're generally okay, because, you know, we're trying to get a smooth rate, and that's our goal here. So you can see here, if we take a 4% rate increase through 2026, and then you spread the rest out annually, it would turn into a 1% rate after 2026. And it seems to align a little bit closer with some of, some of the revenues and expenses. So then we said, we threw in the, the factor of an alternate supply source. And we're not dictating what, what alternate water supply source is going to be there, but if we're going to generally start to save and put, put a reserve aside to, to make that happen for a smooth transition with revenues. And so what we did is, we took the subregional cost, not committing the village to that, but that's, that's some numbers we had to see where, where things fell out. And then the, the first thing, the first thing we did, so it's about $46 million worth of improvements. That would be bonded, we assumed like a 30-year bonding, but, or we, a 30-year period. So we first, we did the same thing. This is like number one, where we did our standard 3% rate increase, where you're at right now with your ordinance, and where does it shake out? And without flipping to the next slide, we can see the expenses are generally much larger than the revenues. There's more orange than blue on that slide in the future years. So then, we go, okay, what's that look like for the target? And as you can see, we're at a deficit of about $22 million. So then we said, what will work, right? And when we looked at that, what will work is about a 5.5% increase through fiscal year 3033, and then a 2, 2% annual rate increase after that. And you, you have a, a little bit of a surplus at the end of the 20-year period. And what's nice about that is all your years in the future, your next five years where we were having that slight deficit, now you're, you're pretty even too during those next five years. So moving ahead, this is a slide with a lot of numbers, but this is basically your, the first column is your cash reserve balance, this is what your target. It changes every year, but that's generally what your policy's requesting. And then each subsequent, we have option 1, 2, 3, 4A, and 5A. And it's basically saying what your actual cash balance is there for reference. And that's really, this is really just numbers put to the slide, if you're wanting the hard numbers. The slide with the green line kind of explains what's going on there. And then what does this mean for rates, if we did any of these options? Obviously, 3% is your, is your lowest option, and then it slides up to go to the 5.5%. And what the, these are key periods, so we did it through the first five years, because that's kind of your current planning period. And I have to make one clarification, is we said, you know, 3%, 3.5%. All the, all of the options include 3% for fiscal year 19. So none of these rate increases are assumed to be until after next fiscal year, so we have a understanding of when they're implemented. But after the five-year period, we then did every five years to see where we fall out. So these are the actual rates per thousand. And then what we did is, we did the monthly sewer bill. Where does this fall out? And you can see by 2023, under the current rate situation, you're at $40.15. If you went to alternate 2, you'd be at $4.86. Alternate 3, $41.56. And then if you're at alternate 5A, you're at $43.72 a month. So generally, you know, a $3.50 or $0.60 difference between the two in a monthly bill. So what does that look like in comparison to our neighbors? This is, to me, sometimes a deceiving slide, because we're looking at fiscal year 19 for everyone else when we're comparing those rates. But if you look at the shaded orange, we're looking at fiscal year 2023. So Montgomery has been very proactive with the rates, you can tell, because they're able to keep the minimal increases. And any of those rates are really lower than some of the fiscal year, most of the fiscal year 19 rates of other communities. So before we get to the, the connection fees, just expectations, let's first break down for the rates. First of all, we're happy to provide any, any information or any other rate options, whatever. If, if there's something else anybody would like to see or answer any questions. The, the, the goal is to have a rate selection by July with a target rate implementation. We said next fiscal year, May 1, 2019. And then I think it's important to note that you have to continually reevaluate rates as needed. Water use changes, population changes. And honestly, the next issue of debt is slated for 2024, is when some of the major improvements happen. So we'd certainly recommend that before you start issuing any of that debt, that you would, you'd review your rates before then, and make sure that it's the solid amount, the proper amount. And finally, we recommended some monthly, we recommended monthly billing. And there's many reasons that help the monthly billing out, as we talked. I think it's truly a comparison from your other utilities. And people get in the habit of paying those bills monthly. So it's, from that perspective, it's very good, just for continuity when paying bills for people. Another reason is, it kind of helps with the demand management. Sometimes tracking it every two, every two months versus every month, it allows, we want to be conscientious of how much water we're using. And sometimes you let it go two months, then half your summer's over, and you don't realize you were irrigating as much as you were irrigating. And by watching, why would I want to do that? Of course, you know, you won't pay as much. But there, there's also a reason for that, is demand management with the facility supplies. It really reduces the amount of infrastructure you'll have to use. So this is just a simple slide that's, it's very, very commonly seen. But this is basically, if your water use, you have current trends, this is business as usual. And you go, I'm going to need a new tank, or a new well, or whatever supply, additional supply you might need at a certain point. And so in a certain year, if, if we're doing business as usual, we'll have to, we'll have to construct that improvement. But now, you do less resource intensive, where you reduce your water supply, and it, all of a sudden, instead of doing your improvement in 2030, 2033, you're doing it in 2042. You're delaying that improvement, and that's really significant in, in costs, and, and that will eventually relate to your rates. So with that, yeah, so you can, and then you're not needing any, as many improvements at the end, so you can downsize as far as how many tanks you need, or how large those tanks have to be. And that's long-term maintenance facilities as well. So that being said, switching from the rates to the connection fee, you know, that's all related to demand management. And as we all know, there was a study done with a subregional study. And when you're reviewing the rates, it's also a good time to look at the connection fees. And at the time of the subregional study, and once again, not marrying the, the village to that option, but just saying, we want to be proactive in collecting revenue to make sure we can do some sort of alternate water supply improvements. The, the, the water supply alone was, how you do the connection fee is you look at how much supply and treatment you need, you look at how much storage you need, and you divide it by the cost, or you divide the number, you divide the cost of the improvement by the number of people. So we looked at the water supply treatment with the subregional study, and you're generally at about 20, $1,201 per PE, which equates with rounding to $4,205, $4,205 per person. And then, assuming that 3.5 people live in the average house, and that's your connection fee for just supply. So you have $1,200 per person, assume 3.5 people live there in each single-family unit, and you're at the 4,200, or $4,205. So then we did a similar, just updating where we were at with the ordinance. We looked at the water storage, updated the cost for the water storage, et cetera. And we were generally speaking between $218 and $286 per, per person. And the reason why you have a change there is, whether you have a million-gallon tank or a 2-million-gallon tank, the larger you build, the more economical it is. So we kind of look, you have a million-gallon tank, and you have 2-million-gallon tanks, so we kind of do the average of those. And what that ultimately equates to is, for, per PE, about $1,453 people, or $1,453. And that, and if you compare that for the single-family home, that's about $5,086, compared to where you're at now of $3,591. So along with the consideration of the rates, we're asking the board to also consider a possible change with the connection fees as well, to be able to implement, future alternate water supply improvements. That being said, I'll leave you with some food for thought and open things up for questions. But it just goes to show you how, how cheap, I should say, how, I mean, we're, we're less than a penny to deliver a gallon of water to your home. And you go out and you pay whatever it is anywhere else, whether it's a gallon of milk or a can of soda, I'll call it pop, from where I'm from, but... And then what would you have, what would you be willing to pay to have 200 gallons of treated water delivered to your door every day? We did call arounds, and from a delivery service, you'll pay $290 a day. From the village of Montgomery, $1.15. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions and thoughts.
I'd like to know what Starbucks you go to for $2.45 a cup? I, I really need to know that.
It was on the website, that's what they're claiming.
Is it the Pupachino?
It's a shot.
I do have a question.
Sure.
When you talk about monthly billing, my spidey senses tingle, because I, my concern is, we have service fees. So my question to staff is... We would cut them in half. We, okay, so. Okay, that's... Same as what it is now. Okay, I want to make sure that we're clear on that, because that concerns me, because that's a real easy way to generate revenue, kind of under the table. So, thank you.
And staying, the fees would be the same for a shadow...
And staying, the fees would be the same for a shut off? We had over 100 last month, which isn't many when you look at, you know, 10,000, 12,000 homes or whatever. But that's still, it's been going up all the time, but would that be the same, the fees, it'd still be?
We do look at surrounding communities to, to make sure that we are still within where we should be. Most of the communities around are $50 for shut off. There are some that are less, some that are more, but roughly it's about $50 on average.
$50 to turn it back on to?
No, it's, it's a, basically it's a disconnection fee. And so once they pay it, we go back to turn it on, so.
This is probably for Michelle. The fees for a house went 50% up from 35 to 5,000. What, what are the other villages? You didn't show those figures. You showed the, the monthly, but what are, what are the costs in other towns? Like do they charge 5,000 a house or?
It's time for the connection fees.
Connection fees.
Oh, the tap fees, we can.
You know, we haven't done a comparative on that, so that's something we were thinking about doing to bring back to you guys, but we wanted to at least get the idea out that we hadn't revised our connection fees for some time and they probably need to be updated. The new idea here is whether we start building in the future cost of the alternate water supply. And because we, you know, we're basically paying to replace what is being used up now and we can't buy it at the price we got it before. So it's going to be a new price, but we'll get a comparative and bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay.
So one thing that we focused on over the last few years here is that we know that our water supply is not sustainable and that we have to do something. And we've looked at different plans for that. We don't know exactly which method we're going to go with at this point, but do we want to be proactive and start planning for that in the future? What year were you anticipating we would have, we would go for the alternate supply?
2029. There's, there's some minor, I would say minimal expenses prior to then, but the, the larger debt starts in 2029.
Okay, awesome. So, and the monthly billing, I think, is something that we just have to do just for the sake of not selling, but showing the value of what you're getting for your water on a monthly basis so people understand what they're getting and what they're paying for and that it costs money to provide.
How does that impact us with Fox Metro? Because didn't we talk about this previously? Maybe not at the board level, but doing monthly billing. Fox Metro, would they still be bimonthly or every two months?
Fox Metro would still be bimonthly. My previous community that I was at billed monthly. Essentially, they would send us their information every two months, or I'm sorry, we would send them our information every two months, even though we billed monthly. So it, it wouldn't change Fox Metro's processes at all.
Except that I'd have a boosted bill one month, every other month because the Fox Metro portion.
Yes.
So it really wouldn't balance us out a whole lot.
Well, they're two different bills currently. Yes, they would still be every other month.
Yeah. And I'm anticipating that their rates are going to be going up. I see all the construction. It just makes me think.
What is that, a month or two ago? I got a letter in the mail saying that they raised them again.
Yeah.
So, which, you know, unfortunately. One of the slides that I, that I like seeing in there is the, even after we increase our rates, so the 3% that we've passed previously to do that every year isn't enough. But even if we were to go to the 5.5% for X number of years, we're still lower than everybody else. I mean, the reality is we're subsidizing our water supply, generally speaking, or just wouldn't have enough money in the future. And so I like the idea of us planning for that alternate water supply because we have the data and we know that's what we should do.
But it's 5.5% per year. We're going to increase the rate.
Yeah, it is. Until what year was that? 33 maybe?
Yes.
3030, 2038?
Yeah.
33.
Here's 33.
So, but we're not making a decision on it tonight just for, go home and drink some water and then think about it. Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, move on to newer unfinished business.
I have an item.
I'll go ahead. I just figured Doug wanted to give us an update.
Brian Lane, update.
We've resubmitted everything back to Commonwealth Edison and we're, as we understand it, we're down to, there are eight divisions at common on the permits. We're down to one. We put a call into them Friday. We didn't get a response, so I will follow up. I don't have a, a new report, but we believe it'll be shortly that we'll be getting that permit. We don't have it right now.
And once we have the permit, we can begin construction?
We'll begin as soon as we can get the contractor mobilized.
Thank you.
And I did go out after this recent batch of storms because we get a little saturation and there was no standing water there at all this time. So I'm just, you know, I kind of keep an eye and when I see it raining hard, I kind of make sure I drive by.
No, I, I do the same thing, Doug. I go by that area when I know that there's been extensive rains. And obviously we're through a very wet period. We've got the creeks running high, the rivers running high. And so it's an area of concern for sure and we're trying to get those improvements in as quick as we can.
I have, I would just like to thank everybody from Public Works, the Police Department, EEI, that helped participate in the Sunday in the Park event this past Sunday. It was a great event. People really enjoy it. I get a lot of compliments about it. They said, why don't we do this every Sunday? I think they just really want me to come by and scoop ice cream at their house every Sunday. But it was, it was a great event and thank you. And thank you to Rotary for helping with getting the trees planted out in the park, the addition trees. Several people commented about it as well. So thank you and thank you specifically EEI for the ice cream. We appreciate it.
All right. Anything else? One thing that I would mention, I know you guys are all aware, I represent Kane and Kendall on the CMAP board and their comprehensive regional plan is out for public comment. There's an open house tomorrow in Kendall County from 4 to 7, so please go check that out. It's not only transportation planning, but land use and, and really a significant amount of time and years goes into the plan. But it's a good thing for us to, to definitely look at here in Kendall County with respect to funding of our transportation or the inadequate funding that we currently have for our transportation needs. So please check that out and let me know if you have any questions. All right, that, future meetings. Next board meeting will be on July 9th at 7:00 PM and the rest are listed there. That'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property and the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yea.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. And entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes. And we're adjourned. Thank you.